Good evening to you. May I approach and give handouts, sir? My name is Buddy Delp, Big Stone Gap, Virginia, Wise County. Treasurer for the High Knob Music Festival. We operate as a subcommittee of the High Knob Enhancement Corporation. And so I'm here this evening to give you a little bit of an update on the festival. I'll try to fast forward through this. You all have got a lot of busy things to take care of. The handout will tell you pretty much everything that I was gonna tell you. Basically, this is our 10th year putting this festival on. Hard to believe that we've actually survived a small community group of people, all volunteer, who put this festival on for the southwest Virginia region. And Scott County and Wise County have been just unbelievably kind to us in helping us raise money to put this festival on. It is a free, family-friendly, no drugs, no alcohol, family event. Family-friendly event. I think that's uncommon in this day and time that you have an event like this that costs the citizens nothing to come to. And they can bring their family. They're not going to be exposed to anything that's not family-friendly. We not only invite people to bring a cooler with their sandwiches and soft drinks and water to the festival, we encourage them to do that. After we had the first festival, we began to get, and we didn't sell anything during that festival. But we had requests for us to provide some sort of food because people are several miles up on the mountain. And some people don't want to bring a cooler and bring sandwiches and drinks. But the reason I mention that, we have so many families that, and especially in today's money, it could cost you a hundred dollars to bring four kids out and feed them all day and provide them with something really good to do. So we're doing that for free. A MEOC, a Mountain Pirate Citizens, runs buses from the J.I. Burton Norton High School all the way up on top of the mountain to the High Knob Recreation Area where this festival is held. So we've done everything that we can possibly do to make this zero cost for anyone who comes to the festival. But if you go to J.I. Burton High School and ride one of the buses, they run every thirty, forty minutes. There's one going up, one coming back, and one sitting off to the side waiting. So the only thing that citizens may incur as far as a fee would be the Forest Service charges a five-dollar fee to, if you drive your vehicle there in park. That's for everyone, and we can't control it. And we've asked for it to be suspended for that day for this festival. And of course, they're very rigid, National Forest is, and they wouldn't do that. But that's something that you don't really have to do. You don't have to bring a vehicle up. You can ride the MEOC van. But at any rate, we're so proud that we do this free festival, and we make it family-friendly. And we have not been able to do it except that Scott County, Wise County, Big Stone Gap, and the City of Norton have really stepped up and helped us to raise money to do this. Our budget is $12,000, and in today's money, that's not a lot. We do everything we can to keep it simple. We use as much local talent as we can. This year, we will have, and there is a copy of the schedule, the second page is our copy of this year's schedule. First group on there is after we do our opening ceremonies, which I would love for any of you all to come up there. The opening ceremonies are just unbelievable. We have tabs played. We have the Rolling Thunder Motorcycle Group comes up and does one of their military programs. So it's just heartrending to be involved in a patriotic opening ceremony like that. I know everyone would enjoy it. But one of the things that we've tried, one of the several things we've tried to do since we started doing the festival, that was all we intended to do because we thought that's a pretty big feat to pull off, is to go up on top of High Knob and put together an outdoor music festival. But then we realized, you know, we need to upgrade the recreation area. It was rundown a little bit. The stage was not much of a stage. The electrical system that supplied the amphitheater area up there was one 12/2 wire running down through the woods. It wasn't even under the ground. I don't know how that happened, and no back-to-force service could explain that. There was no record of it. So Wise County actually paid $4,200 to allow us to put a new electrical system in up there. And then Scott County, Wise County, Big Stone Gap, and City of Norton helped build the stage. And if you've been up there, it's a beautiful stage. It's got hand-hewn wood around the sides of it that was provided by log homes over in Duffield. But we are totally a nonprofit. All of us are volunteers. We go up and mow and weed the recreation area. The Forest Service has not been able to provide any help at all in the last several years. We were struggling before 2020 and COVID. They actually, doesn't seem like they do anything towards the maintenance of the rec area, and we try to do what we can. But I'll get in real quick. We're still raising money to build a handicapped, accessible observation platform just down from the parking lot so that people can, if they're in a wheelchair or cannot get around very good, they have a place they can get to real easily and watch the concert from up above. And that's actually a two-phase plan. The second phase is we intend to build an ADA-compatible walkway or wheelchair path down the road going towards the manhouse up there. But we're trying to cover more than just the festival now by doing this. We begin to see people coming up who were handicapped. They couldn't get around very good or in a wheelchair. And so we realized, you know, we've got to try to do something about that. It's, the Forest Service is not going to do it, so we're taking that on also. Want to give a lot of credit to the High Knob Enhancement Corporation. The last paragraph on your handout tells what our relationship is there. They're doing incredible work right now. Everything was studied during 2020, and everyone's just trying to grow through that and get back to some state of normal, I guess. But at any rate, I know you all are strapped, everyone's strapped for money. We fundraise as much as we possibly can. And right now, we're hoping to raise half of that $12,000 cost of putting this festival on in this campaign I'm doing, going to the different entities to see if I can get support. Right now, Norton has made a sponsorship donation. Big Stone Gap has made a sponsorship donation. Wise County has made a donation. And if Scott County Board can see it clear to be able to help us out with any donation at all, we would appreciate that. If you can't, we do understand times are really hard. Also, I'd like to invite, and I will contact Ms. Pam Cox and try to set up a meeting with her. I'd like to see if we can increase our partnership, not in a monetary way, but get Scott County more involved in what we're trying to do at High Knob and see, and the first paragraph of my handout tells that we're trying to push and promote tourism and generate more people coming into the area and buying gas, buying food, staying in our motels and so forth. And I think we all agree that every single thing that we can do like that, like this festival, to draw people in is important long-term. And all of you all, the four entities I named, have really bought into that. Big Stone is pretty far away from us as far as miles go, but we're looking at a regional concept, and they have bought into it, and they're doing a regular donation this year. But I will try to get in and get with Pam and see if there's some ways that we can get, for instance, maybe some volunteers who would like to come up and help work with us to do these projects. I think there's eight of us on our committee now, and everyone's old, and it's getting more and more difficult to do the work. I'll be having surgery on my arm next week, week after that. So I don't think I'll be able to do weed eating and mowing up there, but I'm sure we will get it done one way or the other. But again, thank you all for your help in the past, and I won't ask you for any kind of decision right now. Just you've got my name and phone number. If you can help us out, then the checks will be made out to High Knob Enhancement Corporation. Last paragraph on my handout has got all the information. And I thank you so much for your support over the years. And thank you all. I'll reiterate what some people said. This is a hard job. These are hard times. Inflation has caused everything to go up. Two years ago, if you took your family out to eat, now when you go out, you'll pay twice that just about. So that money transfers into everything that we do, and everyone is hurting, and I realize that. But thank you all so very much for your patience with me this evening.
Thank you.
Do we have enough left in our condition?
You have $1,800.
One more meeting.
If you don't mind, let's go on to the next one and see what it is, and then come back.
No, we're good.
This is not. Okay.
It's informational.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
It's hard to stand it when it's down that low.
Yeah.
Do you foresee anything else?
Bruce, will you be asking for anything?
I wasn't going to ask for anything today. You know, we'll be, if you all.
I mean, in this budget, you're like, June, will you be asking in June?
I will always ask. The one thing that we probably ask for, I guess, Fourth of July is, you know, the property for our fireworks at Teletag and to help us with that and whatever you guys can do to help us with that. That's about all that I can ask for.
That's the only other group I can think of right off that would be this fiscal year?
Yeah.
Because you usually help that day, but that's later.
That's later.
How quickly are you needing this money?
It's fine because we actually won't make most of our payments out till June the 15th.
Okay.
That's, the day of the festival is the big flow of money out because we have to pay for practically everything then.
Right.
Have some expenses leaving out, food to sell, that kind of thing, but we have some funds in our accounts, so we're up to the day of the festival or even after, for that matter, would help.
How much did you give to Waver City last year?
Mr. Cross, was it a thousand? We gave Waver City last year.
Yeah. And we also, you know, we get permission to use the Teletag where we shot them off last year. I will request that also. Did you be able to use that, Rob?
Displetive, the 22. Is he going to ask today?
No, he's not asking today.
But it needs to come out this budget. Well, half of the 18 would be 900.
And I'll tell you what, I'll chip in 100 myself for you and to make it even 1,000. So 900 from the board, 100 from me.
I'm open. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate what you're doing here.
Let's do a motion.
Do we have?
Sorry, sorry. Let's do a motion about this.
I'm making a motion that we can stay 900.
I second that motion. I'm dead, Mr. Sorry.
Mr. Skeen made a motion that we do 900. And Mr. Manis seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
From contingency.
Yes. And 100 over here.
He's got the address.
I'm going up to check right now.
He's just going to do it now, I think.
Oh, what?
I'll forget it if I don't do it right now.
Okay, we'll move on to the Appalachian Harvest presentation.
Hey, Adam Pendleton, Appalachian Harvest, General Manager. Mr. Skeen had been over two or three times now and asked if we come and kind of share what we've got going on over there with the board, really just see if y'all can help get word out to producers, anybody that might be interested and who may be able to help in the area. So we're a food hub. We're located in Duffield. It was established in 2000. Basically, it came about when tobacco was kind of going out. A lot of farmers needed some different options for their land. It actually started in Stickleyville, that facility burned in around 2007, I believe, and the one we're currently in fully started out of there in 2008. We offer a pretty wide suite of services to producers. Up until last year, we strictly produce, so we ventured into meat now. But our suite of services to our producers on the produce side would include.
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation?
I do. Is there anywhere to put it up?
You got it. Don't it?
I do know it.
Where you going, Rob?
It's on Google sheet. Can email it to you. You got to email it. How about that? So I'm at Appalachian Harvest, the general manager there. Been there for almost 10 years. Like I mentioned, AD has been over a couple times and visited the facility and had interest and thought some of you all might, as well as some producers here in Scott County, and asked me to come talk a little bit about what all we've got going on over there. So it was established, the facility that was established in 2000. Like I say, it started off in Stickleyville, a tobacco barn, basically just to help producers transition their tillable land, have another use for it, you know, have a little additional income from the farm there. We are one of the oldest food hubs in Virginia, or in the country. Our facility there in Duffield's about 15,000 square feet. We're straight across from the Pioneer Center. Familiar with where that's at. About 5,000 feet of that's refrigeration. We've got three different temperature zones so to accommodate different types of produce and keeping them as fresh as possible so that they're in good conditions when we ship them out. Some of our main markets would be like Ingalls and Whole Foods and other large retail customers. So to this point, typically, air structure is going into distribution center. We worked a little bit with food country and doing some direct to stores and recently some schools over the last 18 months or two years. But historically, since we've been open, it's been tractor and trailer loads into distribution centers. Just because, you know, we're coming so far away and not a lot of opportunity locally around here to deliver to stores and things like that, so we're having to truck it four, five, six hours. Makes more sense to try to drop a load of it in one area. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Got the two tractor and trailers, refrigerated trucks, two box trucks. We've got wash lines there at the facility, so growers can come in and use those. Got a door code on it. That's one of the services we offer, equipment. And then we've recently started, I guess about three or four years ago, we've got our herb hub as well, which I'm not going to touch on too much. I'm not as familiar with that side of it. So some of the other services we offer is training and technical assistance. So if it's a new producer, one of the big things that we have a lot of interest in is a lot of these large buyers require what's called GAAP, or Good Agricultural Practices. If you've ever been around David Mann's farm, you've probably seen some of the things he's had to implement to comply with that. But we have usually three or four trainings a year where we'll go over that. We've got a manual. Basically, it simplifies it as much as we can, helps the producer lift some of that burden off and be able to get certified because a lot of these large grocery customers do require that minimum certification to sell to them. And then we also offer on-farm assistance. So if they're having issues with, you know, how to plant something, or spacing, or fertility, or disease, pest, whatever, you know, we go out, we'll look at those, try to help them figure out the issues as best we can. So I can say the equipment I mentioned in the warehouse that's available for them to use, we have that, but we also have some implements. So a plastic layer, a watermill planter, and then recently, I guess two years ago, we purchased a no-till drill, so a lot of farmers are using that to cover crop width and things like that once they're pulling that plastic up or finishing with the crop through the winter. Aggregation and distribution, so that's what's mainly going on there at that facility in Duffield, pulling a lot of product in. We've got a pretty wide footprint. We're working with producers as far down as in Madison, Kentucky, up in Tobaht County, a lot of producers up in the Hillsborough area, of course, here in Scott County, Washington. In the past, we've had a few out of West Virginia, Tennessee, North Carolina, so work with about 30 or so producers on the vegetable side, and I think we're roughly around 14 or 15 on the beef side. So market development, so we handle all of that side of it. Basically, we're not going to ask a grower to produce something that we don't have a home for. Last thing we want to do is have them grow something, then it go to waste or them not be able to market it. So we try to match up their production, though we're asking them to put in the ground with what we have market for. And as needed, you know, we're trying to develop more market to give them more opportunities as that comes along. Our sales team, I should have threw in the many years of experience they have there. I don't know if you all are familiar with Robin Robbins, but she's done sales for a long time there. Bonnie Gubank's been with us maybe about a year, and then Brittany would be. So we've got three people on staff there that's handling the sales and done a real good job with that. And then season extension, so that's one thing we're starting to look into pretty heavy. Price is typically better if you're off-season of what's local around here. So we've had a couple producers start to explore some things like that. We've got some strawberries out of Kentucky over the winter. Had one producer grow some cabbage in a greenhouse, and the yield and the quality of that, it was harvested in February, really good, had limited inputs, and hit the peak price in that. So that's one thing we're starting to look at more and more is how we can, you know, extend the season out without adding a lot of cost on producers and get them a little higher price on their crops. Just some pictures of the facility, and then the food boxes, that's become a real big piece of what we're doing. We're handing those out to Duffield as well. It's working with, I think upwards of about 30 churches and food banks and things like that that's picking up at the facility in Panhandle Mount, really across the entire region from here to the Carroll County area. So we're doing about 1,500 or 1,600 of those a week. The value added, so we work with a cannery out of Lee County, the Relish Barn. We're able to sell some products to them that's seconds or, you know, maybe too big, too small, misshapen, things like that. That'll end up in some of these products that we're selling to a few of our retail customers. And then the beef, as I mentioned, I'll talk on this one a little more. Just started that one about 18 months ago at this point. We feel like there's a lot of opportunity there. Kind of got to looking around at our service area, and there's definitely a lot more cattle in this part of the country than there is produce. So we felt like we was missing a big opportunity, not helping the beef producers try to keep a little bit more of that money local. So we, one of the first places we sold it, where you said standing there was in the food country. So we're kind of working on developing markets for that as well as, you know, hopefully down the road, some other items, maybe some hog and lamb and maybe even chicken at some point, you know. But right now, we're just focused on the beef. And like I said, like I said earlier when we was in here, main reason for this is just if y'all can help us spread word. I run into somebody almost daily that lives in Scott County or Lee County, has absolutely no clue that we even exist and what we do. And if they do, it's mostly because of the food boxes, honestly. They say, oh, y'all are the people that hand out the food boxes. But as far as knowing the services we offer to growers and farmers in the area, it's pretty limited. But some of the things that we definitely could use right now is broccoli production. We've been about 600 cases of broccoli a week and really don't have a producer that's doing any volume of that during the peak of the growing season. The beef, as I mentioned, I'm actively looking for beef producers too that want to finish out cattle. We've got a set of guidelines on how we want those finished out. You know, mainly, we're trying to take them off of feedlots out west or whatever, so I don't necessarily creep them up in a feedlot here, but if they can have access to pasture, you know, or still find some grain and things like that. But really, like I say on that, just wanting to keep the money local. And then the season extension, that's a place we're definitely focused right now as far as production. Couple crops we messed with like that in the last year, it definitely paid off for the producers. They captured quite a bit of premium compared to what it would have been if they had grown that during the summer. So we just, like I say, we feel like that's a real big opportunity for somebody that's interested and wanting to get into this. Already kind of touched on that, like I say, the strawberries, the cabbage, and there is some grants out there that'll help with some hoop houses and things like that, I believe through, I'm not sure if it's the NRCS or the FSA, but I know there is some grants available. If you run into any producers that's interested in that, you could guide them in that direction or to us, and we can help them from there. Some of our impacts since we started in 2000, so around 36.5 million dollars and mainly in the produce since we started there. About 58,000 in Virginia Fresh Match incentives. We also have groundwork programs, so we work with Scott Services pretty heavily on participants for that program. They actually help around the warehouse, pack the boxes. Had a couple go on to get CDLs. One of them's a truck driver for us now. Got one that's running the warehouse for us. So it's not only been a good program for them, but for us as well. And then we have two other sites, one in the Abington area and one in Tazewell that also has gardens, and they're working in those areas there as well. So that would be part of that 53 number. So like I mentioned, we do a lot with food boxes. And then prior to that, we started that about a year and a half ago. We always fundraise quite a bit of money to donate just loose produce, usually seconds or over just, to food banks. And all that totaled together, we've done a little over 7 million pounds of food that we've been able to donate to food banks across the region. So the 150,000 pounds in Grow Your Own since 2012, that's another program we have that's typically working with lower-income, anybody with some kind of, some kind of boundary, garden boxes, things of that nature, to help them produce food that they can have and eat. 5,000 acres of forest land conserved through the forest farming, which would be the herb hub, things of that nature that I mentioned. 34 beginning farmers through the program that we've had there since 2017. So that's link them up with a farmer that's needing help and kind of like an internship basis, and they're able to get actual on-the-farm experience while also helping that farmer out with a labor issue. AD raised beds installed, 123,000 food boxes distributed since June of 2020, and then 300-plus farms supported through the different types of training that I mentioned across the region. Any questions?
Don't have a question, but I just wanted to make a comment. Those food boxes that you're handing out are such a blessing to our community, especially down there in Duffield. You know, I'm sure you're aware, every day, or every Friday, the line is all the way back out to the road. And I just wanna say from the folks in District Six, we really appreciate what you're doing there.
We're glad to do it. Definitely huge demand for that. Like I say, we're doing about fifteen or sixteen hundred a week, but that's really not even scratching the surface of the need, I don't think.
It's all great quality stuff, that's the other thing. Like, I've seen what y'all need out. It's fantastic, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
How do people sign that, what's qualifier to, on the boxes?
On the boxes? So we do hand a few out there at the facility. A lot of those boxes are actually funneled through the partners, like I mentioned, the churches and the food banks around the region. That can vary a little bit depending on requirements with those partners. For the ones that are facility there, like Chris mentions, there's a line that usually strolls all the way from their facility, basically out to the main highway that comes through there. Sometimes we'll have to reroute them around the Pioneer Center, but for those there, you know, just get the line, and it's one family on those boxes.
Yeah, and there's no forms or anything like that anyone has to fill out. So please, I've been trying to help y'all get the word out on that. Really appreciate it.
We are planning a follow-up farmers meeting with Scott Gerald, the Extension Agent in McAllen. So we don't have a date on that yet, but that's coming. Just not into detail, but financial opportunities for Scott County growers, produce growers. Financially, what would they see?
I mean, definitely depend on size and scale and acreage. I mean, if I wanna, I'll throw out a high number. I've seen producers clear as much as seven, eight thousand dollars an acre, and maybe even more on certain crops. But I mean, I think, I know personally that's doable, to clear seven or eight thousand dollars an acre in crops.
I know there's expansion, like in the Bristol area. Do you wanna touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, there's a... Yeah, so we've recently, the food hub down here in Duffield's one of the things that we do under the umbrella of appellation Sustainable Development. But we recently purchased seventeen acres off of exit, let's say thirteen, don't hold me to that, but right there in the Abington area. And basically, it's gonna end up being the main office for a lot of the other programs that we have, and also a campus that producers will be able to come out and see different innovative practices. Some of those will be forest farming related, some of them may be, you know, no-till production, just a slew of just, you know, different things to think about on a trial basis, as well as offer opportunities for the groundwork program for expansion on that. And there's gonna be a greenhouse on-site there that'll be ran by them, and then all the farming will be done by groundwork staff there as well.
You'd mentioned, well, when you and I talked, you were interested in a slaughterhouse possibly. Have you done any more with that, or?
Yeah, so I mean, that's something we're, I think, you know, we're gonna get to the point of is a slaughterhouse potentially in this area. I think we was talking about the Tazewell one, where it was on county land, and they've gotten a couple grants up that way, and they're putting one in. But, you know, right now, we're getting by, but I think when we get this built on out and get more producers brought in, and we do get to the point of going after a large wholesale customer, I think there's gonna be a need for that, so that we can have more control when keeping the product very uniform, you know, not to end up making a customer mad and things like that. So, and I don't know if any of you have cattle, or take any of those to slaughter, or anything like that, but it's pretty difficult to find openings. A lot of times, they're booking excess of a year out. So just to keep that from being a limiting factor, and it will help producers in the area and expand this program. You know, at some point, we feel like that's gonna come into play, be a need that will happen.
Where can we find out more information about the beef? Because I know there's a lot of beef producers in the area.
I can leave contact with you.
I appreciate that.
Share that out. Our website, my contact's also on the website. It would be A-S-Develop.org.
You mentioned tour of your place, of the four members.
Yeah, yeah. So it's been out, like I say, two or three times. If anybody else is interested in coming down and seeing the facility and getting more in the weeds about what all goes on there, or if you have producers that's interested, definitely send them down. We're always there Monday through Friday, sometimes on Saturday, but usually eight-thirty, around five, somebody's around. Anytime you're in the area, feel free to stop by. We'd love to give you a tour and answer any questions that come up.
It's a really great facility y'all have there. I was there earlier last year to do a tour.
So you have been to the?
I have been. I saw, well, it's kinda funny, I was helping set up for Duffield Days, and I saw the line that was stretched out, and I walked over there and asked everybody, you know, what's going on here? What were y'all really starting advertising? And they took me through the facility. I think we kinda gave a tour, gave my daughter a pumpkin to take home.
I'm in Roger.
It was burning.
Oh, okay, yep.
So, yeah.
But yeah, if you're ever in the area, we'd love to have you stop by and just get word out. We appreciate it.
You and I talked about just getting word out. A lot of people you don't even know about you. So hopefully with the TV coverage and the newspaper coverage, hopefully Lisa will put you a plug in there, and we can get some farmers on board.
Sure. Well, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Along with the agenda, D, the Wildwood Health and Wellness Center partnership.
I emailed this memorandum of understanding out. I did hear back from the majority, so I went ahead and signed that and sent it in. Just for the records, I will go over that again. It's the memorandum of understanding between Dickinson County and Scott County for the Wildwood Health and Wellness Center project. The purpose of the MOU establishes a cooperative partnership between Dickinson County and Scott County to engage collaboratively in the Wildwood Health and Wellness Center project as part of the Virginia opioid abatement authorities initiatives. This partnership is aimed at leveraging combined resources and expertise to address opioid misuse and enhance overall community wellness. We don't have any financial responsibility with this MOU. Some of the responsibilities, Dickinson County will lead the project, managing the physical and financial aspects without sharing fund management responsibilities. Scott County commits to supporting program development, expertise sharing, and community engagement efforts related to the project. Enjoy efforts with both counties will cooperate on achieving the project's goals, including the exchange of best practices and learning for effective opioid abatement. So just need to ratify this MOU between Scott County and Dickinson County for the Wildwood Health and Wellness Center project.
Any discussion or questions for you? We have a motion to let her go ahead and ratify this.
I'll make that.
Chris makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Mr. Jeter seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And E, eight E on the agenda, resolution to increase the transfer station tipping fee. Sally has got a form filled out. Here, any discussion on that?
I think we wanted to discuss the amount.
Yes. And I think the last thing I heard was sixty, was it sixty-five?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Just keep going up.
About sixty-five.
Sixty dollars?
They might just throw it on the side of the road if it were just sixty-five.
Does that document designate exclusion, exemptions?
It does.
It does.
It's on your tablets.
Yeah, double tablet.
Not pleased.
I did have the church and organization in Nicholsville that does the free installation of decks and that kind of thing. I don't think they, do they pay anything now? Baptist organization.
Were you talking about the partnership that are located in Nicholsville?
Yeah.
I don't, I can't remember if there was like a board exemption that happened at some point for them. What they bring up there is not a whole lot. I'll have to check on that.
Someone, Kendall Keith mentioned that, since they're all, everything voluntary and basically free, if they had to pay for that, it might put a strain on what they do.
You know, when we were talking about this, we really didn't consider churches and that kind of work, so.
I think a lot of there is of decks and handicapped accessible ramps and that kind of thing.
You know, it may be based on, you know, instead of giving a blanket out there, if it's incidental, you know, it's not gonna be, you know, something that would be devastating to the project anyway. But if it is a big project they see coming, and that's gonna be a significant cost, they could come to the board and ask, "Y'all waive the fees for that particular project?" Maybe a better way of doing that. And then you don't have the issue of contractors doing something for a church, if the church is hired, they're saying it's for the church, and that being unclear, and the guys at the transfer station have to weed that out. So that might be a better way of doing that. We do that from time to time with churches that are getting building permits. They'll come in, so we don't have a blanket waived for their purpose, but they've come into the board before and said, "Would you guys waive the permit fees for this project that we're doing?" And you say yes or no. It's probably the same way, good way of handling that.
Yeah, we can let, we can let those folks know. Is there any way that we could add that to the resolution, like their model?
I think that's what we're saying. We don't need to.
We don't need to.
Okay.
So they could just come on here and ask?
Yeah, that'd be a case by case.
And the guys at the transfer station could tell them that, right? I mean, if they came there with, you know, that they could get?
Right. And there are guys at the transfer station, they can use their best discretion and say, "Hey, you guys gonna have to go get a, you know, you're not gonna have to take this back right now, or, you know, block the road," or anything like that. But, yeah, they need to go through that process, try to get that out there as best they can. And that's something that, they still have to get their building permits through the building department, and we can give a notice to Mr. Gilmer and ten to let them know that that will be a tip and fee if they have disposal unless they come to the board and ask for that specific project.
The tires we talked about, possibly going to a ton each versus a dollar per tire on disposal?
It's, at forty dollars a ton currently, it's pretty much a wash. I did the math before of how many tires were in a container and what it weighed, and what we had to pay it wise. And it's pretty much one dollar for a car tire, times every how many it makes to make a ton, equaled about the same, same money. But if you do it by ton now, it's forty dollars, or it may be whatever you all make tip and fee, and it may save some of that cost of all the watts.
So are you suggesting adding tires in to be weighed versus?
They're already weighed. We keep track on the weight of the tires, so they're weighing counted now. So it may be just a matter of not counting and just charging them the tipping fee for tires.
Because it's kind of the honor system now for them to chip in.
Well, if they come across, if they're coming up there, they're already at the tent, I guess, to do the right thing. And they're coming across the scales, you know. And a lot of times, they might have two or three tires and a mess of stuff that they cleaned up around the house. That might make it easier for our guys, just if it's something they have to charge for, they just charge for all of it.
Any more questions, discussion? If not, do we have a motion to pass a resolution?
I'll make that motion at what amount?
Sixty.
At sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars. Has Miss Glover made a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Give it to Mr.?
Mr. Castile, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we go on to eight F, six-year plan, road progress.
Oh, one thing, Mr. Chairman. When will that go into effect?
I mean?
Medium.
Usually that's what it is when they adopt something.
Okay, so tomorrow morning?
Unless you want it to be July first, or, you know, whatever.
Well, I talked to the Blountville landfill today about the renewal, and although today is kind of the day that we started before, that new pricing at Blountville won't take effect until July first. So.
So start July first? July or June?
That might give us some time to let contractors and public know that this is coming.
June or July? Did you say June or July?
July.
July. He said July, I said June.
I was confused.
I said June, start at June first.
Oh, yeah. Maybe, well, July first is the beginning of the new fiscal year. That's when we'll incur more cost at the landfill. Might give us some time to let people know that this is coming. So, because it's gonna affect some budgets, like the Central River Traffic Service.
Do you want to start July first?
That would be my recommendation.
So if you all can all agree, you just add that into what you just did as part of the resolution?
I wanna make sure one thing, that's not gonna mess with our budget, is it? Where we have the projection at sixty dollars. Does that take effect on July first?
July first.
Okay. Making that clear?
So you're saying July first?
Yeah. So I make the motion to change the tip and fee to twenty, or sixty dollars, starting July first.
Okay. And you're okay with that? So we just, we'll just add that in?
Six-year plan?
Okay, on the six-year plan, if you checked your email and saw that there's not new money to add any roads for this upcoming year, so we've got a couple of options. We will be having the public hearing on the six-year plan. You will get that in advance. That will be at your June meeting. That will be advertised as a joint public hearing with VDOT. I have in your packets the roads that were given to me and their estimated cost and average daily vehicle trips. I have inquired, Mr. Skeen had asked about getting a traffic count for all the dirt roads, so I have asked VDOT about that, but have not heard back yet. So you've got some options. You can prioritize what you have here, or we can keep this on record, and then, let's say, after the first of the year next year, we'll do our prioritization of these roads, and then we'll know what to give VDOT to add, you know, in what order. So it's completely up to you if you want to, you know, take these and look through them and be deciding over the next several months, you know, what you wanna do and how you wanna vote for your priorities. We can do that. I do know on Ford Branch Road, they are gonna redo the traffic count, because when, there's two sections because of the length. They seem backwards to me, because the lowest traffic count is where there's the houses, and the higher traffic count is on the other end. So Mr. Mullins and myself had that discussion, and they are gonna redo the traffic counts at some point on those two, just to make sure that those didn't get switched somehow.
I'm pretty sure those are backwards.
I think so.
Just telling where everybody lives through there.
So they are gonna recheck those, I know. So they are going to recheck those, I know, and then that would give us time to see what they come back with, if we can get traffic counts for all the other roads as well. So it would be my recommendation, totally up to you all though, on just postponing this till maybe January, and then we can start digging in again before we add more roads, but totally up to you all.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a comment right quick, that, you know, this isn't the county not having the money for this, this is the state not having the money for this, this is VDOT not setting the money aside for this.
And I think what the problem was, just for the record, there's a road that's on the plan, under construction now, so the road was not for God, it was not left off the plan, it's actually one that they're working on right now, it was just left off the funding part. The road's still being worked on as of today, but that financial piece, once they put that back in the budget, that was over four hundred thousand dollars, that took what money we thought we were going to have for next year, so that was, that's what came up on that.
Which road is that, just the?
He didn't say.
Okay, so.
But he didn't, you know, specify, it was one that was currently under construction, not one that he got left off.
Okay, so we can ask him about that?
Sure, they will be here in June, we will do the public hearing, and then Mr. Sumter will give his quarterly update.
Where is Mill Creek Road?
That's off of Clint River Highway going toward?
Rock Cove High School.
Rock Cove Road.
Well, it's two different ways, Clint River Highway or Rock Cove Memorial Road, it's that connector.
Comes out of County Basket.
You know where Hill Station is and where you went to the landfill or the trace side out there, that's that road.
So any other questions on any of the others? Just make sure they look like what you had in mind requesting those, like your areas and stuff, if it's your road, make sure it's kind of looks like it should, and I'll hang on to these and we'll start that at the beginning of next year.
I brought up Mill Creek Road on the screen, Mr. Sumter.
This road that me and you come out of Taylor Town that day, then made a ride, went back towards Rock Cove to try to get in, that's.
Based on this list, that's the one that has the most.
Correct.
I believe that was Miss Addington's road that she selected. The hundred and sixty's quite a bit, traffic count.
That's one lesser sentence.
I bet they use it as a connector for Rock Cove or as a shortcut.
The other thing is, we may talk about this later, is adding secondary roads, the five percent thing, but that came up in June.
Yeah, I think so, or, well, I guess we need to talk about that tonight because they would need to know that when they're formulating the six-year plan.
You want to touch on that? Don't know there's a lot of detail, but just the basics.
There is an option to set aside five percent of your funding that's available for the six-year plan to go toward rural additions, which would be taking additional roads into the VDOT system. To do those additions, you have to ensure that you've got the right away from the people that's along that road, and you have to get that road up to standard as far as your width and everything. So it's a lot of detail in taking a road into the plan, but there's a lot of cost as well. I know there was one that we've looked at, I guess it was last year, and it was, it was several hundred thousand dollars to take in a subdivision road that's over in Carter's Valley that we've been hearing a lot about. So you can set aside that five percent, and that will continue to grow until you have enough to do a project, so if that's something you all want to do, we can let VDOT know, we would take action, yes or no, and then let VDOT know so they can incorporate that into the plan that we'll have the public hearing on.
We have six hundred miles of unpaved road as it is, I think we should just leave it as it is. It's about two hundred and fifty miles. Is it, oh, sorry, two hundred and fifty, that's fine, I'm thinking of another number, but, it's getting late, yeah, two hundred and fifty miles, I don't think we need to be worried about adding, adding other ones in.
Yeah, that's, that's paving, this would just be gravel, gravel maintenance, it'd still be money involved, but it wouldn't be paving, it would be just taking it over, degrade it, state takes it over.
Yeah, but that's still, that's taking away money from paving these roads, it's already going to take us around sixty years, that's what, that's the number I was thinking of, it's going to take us about sixty years at current level of funding to pave all of the dirt roads in the county, and, you know, I have to say, let's add five percent on that.
So you're saying, you're saying that people will never, for sixty more years, they'll never have a chance to get added into the system?
No, I don't think, that's what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to say that if you've got a road in the county that isn't already part of the system, it's going to be a hard, hard sell for me. When they build these roads for, like say a subdivision, don't they already have to bring them up to state standard?
That one that I was talking about, it's been there for many, many years.
Right.
It's not anything that's new.
Yeah, I just, I just worry about what kind of precedent that sets because, you know, I hate for Ms. Tice to come back and get here and say, you know, you're pushing my road off a little bit more to take another road in there.
Well, just kind of five percent off the top of the budget for the county, is that the way it works?
I think that's my understanding.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have what's called revenue sharing, those grants will open up next year, or that program will open up again next year in 2025, and if you wanted to do a rural addition, we could look at applying for a revenue sharing grant, and it's like a dollar dollar match, so if we were to the point and you wanted to use the Regional Improvement Commission funds to match a grant dollar for dollar, then that might be a good way to take in a new section.
It might be a better idea for a case by case basis, but, you know, coming this, coming here, we're not going to do it, and I don't see us magically getting any money next year.
Ms. Glover has a road that she has to petition on, and I've got one that I've had ever since I've been here, but it even has a whole page of names, that's two that we've heard a lot about, so I'm hanging on to those. I've got a binder that's for VDOT, and they're, they're in that binder.
So I understand where we're coming from on those, I would like to see them moved in there, but as much as we've heard on rural roads and dirt roads, I just don't know that I can do that.
We will be discussing this section for the first few years.
This would be for the six-year plan, the five percent.
That would be a discussion as it happens in January.
Yes. Moving, I own eight G Enterprise, someone John's going to talk to us about that later. Is Mr. Ferguson, did he leave anything with you on the line of credit?
Yes, this is something we do every year, the board of supervisors just needs to authorize the treasurer to go out for a line of credit for the school system in the amount of four million dollars, and they don't use that very often, but that allows them to draw down money before our tax money starts coming in in the fall, so it's a benefit to the county. Instead of the schools drawing down money when we're tighter in the fall of the year, it allows them to use a line of credit, and they do cover all the interest that is charged if they do do a draw on the line, so I just need authorization to allow Mr. Hales to go out for a line of credit for the school system in the amount of four million dollars.
Do they have to pay any interest if they don't use none of it?
No, it's not like a revenue anticipation, it's just a standard line of credit, so you only pay interest if you use it.
You said that's four million?
Four million. We need a motion to approve the school's line of credit.
So moved.
Ms. Addy, you made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Glover, second, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we move on to the golf cart fee increase, do you have a, probably on your iPad?
Last time we did this, it was just by board motion, currently we charge seven dollars. I think currently it's seven dollars for green fees and eight dollars. Green fees are currently seven for nine, eleven dollars for eighteen, so we're requesting to increase each of those a dollar. Golf cart rentals, nine holes are currently seven, eighteen holes are fifteen, we're requesting to increase each of those a dollar. The Monday special, Tuesday Senior Citizen Day, and Thursday Ladies Discount Day, all of those are staying the same, I just put those on there to go along with the fees in the board motion, that's currently what we charge for those now. But our request is to increase a dollar for each of those items, so if you play nine holes of golf with a cart, it would be sixteen dollars, eighteen holes would be twenty-eight.
Any discussion, or is that okay with everyone?
Well, that'd take care of the expenses on the golf carts that humans that we purchase.
The golf carts were purchased with interest that we earned on our investment on the local government investment pool, so there was no tax dollars spent on those, but it will help with golf course operations.
What's expenses on that golf course?
I don't have that draft in front of me, but I think they have about a two hundred thousand dollar budget.
That's what they, they don't, that's what they spend every year. And they take in seventy thousand.
It's more than seventy, I can send you those exact numbers and break that down for you.
We have a motion for proposed fee changes for the golf course. Do we just want to do twenty?
I would do it a dollar increase for each thing, it is twenty-eight if you play eighteen holes, but we also need to have those broke down individually, some people go and walk, so they wouldn't have a cart fee, but Derek, Mr. France, is requesting that the green fees be increased a dollar as well, so that would be the same whether you walk or you ride.
So in other words, it's going to be average of a dollar, two dollars?
Right.
Right. I'll, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Castile made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Glover, second, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we do have an eight J here, which is changing our meeting date. June fifth, is that correct? Did you say June, July?
July.
July?
Be Wednesday.
What is that date?
July third?
First?
First Wednesday?
Yeah.
Be the first Wednesday?
The third?
July third?
Be the first Wednesday of every month?
At eight thirty?
At eight thirty in the morning.
You, Dr. Dutter, you?
July. Start it in July.
Does that take a motion?
What time of day do we want it?
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty in the morning.
Ms. Darnes and I have spoken a little bit, she has a thing she tries to wrap up in the mornings when she comes in, and the PSA board makes it fine, which I think's a good time, I would, unless somebody opposes nine o'clock, that kind of gets you out of bus traffic too. Would that work a little better for you, Ms. Darnes, give me an extra thirty minutes to?
Of course.
Just to get anything?
I'm good with either, but nine would give us a little more time of the morning.
Does that take a motion?
I guess I need to amend your rules of procedure.
Discussion on eight thirty or nine, does it matter? Nine o'clock?
I go to the work time, it's always been mine, so.
Okay, we need to amend our rules of procedure to change our meeting time and date, dates, first Wednesday of every month, and July third, the first one, at nine o'clock. Do we have a motion to change those rules of procedure?
I'll make that motion to change those.
Ms. Glover makes it.
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Castle, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One opposed.
Did you say that you have to go work? I have one we change, if you make a feature.
Don't worry about it.
I'll make it work.
Ms. Vickers, keep it out of it.
Please appropriate five hundred and forty dollars to general properties contracted in maintenance, one thousand dash four three two zero zero dash four zero three three two four for reimbursement received in deposit at the treasurer's office, and appropriate forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents to capital projects, communications equipment replacement, one thousand dash nine four zero 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 dash four zero eight one zero four dash zero eight zero two six for an insurance claim received in deposit at the treasurer's office, and appropriate seventeen thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents to capital projects, communications equipment replacement, one thousand dash nine four zero 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 dash four zero eight one zero four dash zero eight zero two six for reimbursements received in deposit at the treasurer's office.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Sorry.
Ms. Addy made the motion, Mr. Jeter, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And please accept Circuit Court's Library of Virginia Records Preservation Grant, twenty twenty-three FY dash zero four nine, and if accepted, please appropriate twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars in the established expense code, CCRPP, LVA Grant, Records Brooks, Microfilming, one thousand dash two one nine four zero dash four zero five eight five zero dash zero one six six one for reimbursement received in deposit at the treasurer's office.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Addy made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Main, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Tina?
You have one appointment to the Mountain Empire Community College Advisory Board. Adrienne Hood has been serving, and she did reapply, and she's your only applicant.
Are there any nominations?
Hold on, my Adrienne Hood.
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion to nomination seats, and we vote by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
I second that.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sir, can I ask, did you, while I was stepped out, did you all vote to have the meeting for next month in the morning?
No, it's going to start July third at nine o'clock.
In the morning?
Yes, nine o'clock in the morning.
How many people do you think can stop work and come to meet to that meeting? Is it in the bylaws that the public, that it's supposed to be held at a time when the public can, can come?
We, we have tried to do it as we're doing it now, starting at six o'clock, and it's not worked, so we're going to change back to the first Wednesday at nine o'clock.
Why?
Right.
I've been, I've not come here all my life, you know why? Because I got to work, but this is my third meeting that I've been to, and the only reason I can?
So why are we changing?
The only reason I can even show up to this is because it's at six o'clock today because I got to be on the plane.
We've had, since January, at three o'clock in the afternoon? I'm, I'm sorry, at, at six o'clock in the afternoon. Right. That, that?
And it ain't working for y'all? It's not convenient, I mean, why are we changing it? That's why I'm asking.
We've tried both ways, and this is the best way. It has been passed, there's no discussion on it.
It's not in the bylaws that we have to say so when we can attend a meeting?
No, it's not.
Well, it needs to be. We'll, we'll have to attend that meeting.
Okay, we'll go on to appointments.
You have one appointment to the Lotsonge County Regional Library Board, Jennifer May has been serving, she has served her two terms and is no longer eligible, and you did not receive any applications for this appointment.
I've got one more person I want to call and try to see if she's interested.
I've been searching too, but it's hard to find people.
Okay, county attorneys report?
You all have a report in your packets, I could answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Pickly? County administrators report?
You have your treasurer's accountability in your packet, the general fund balance after this month's claims is eight million, seven hundred, twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty.
we have early claims for the month that total $662,416.79. Current claims total $887,705.54. And total claims for the month is $1,550,122.33. You do have the list of the 5,000 and over claims for the month. If you want to look at those and see if you have any questions.
I'll make the motion. We pay the bills.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Darrell's second. Ms. Addington made the motion. All favor, six five, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
I do have one thing under miscellaneous. Mr. Eric Smith gave me a call yesterday and wanted to follow up on the presentation that he gave last month and requested opioid direct funding for the project in Lebanon. So I told him I would mention this tonight and get your thoughts about his request.
Any thoughts?
You want me to tell you you're still thinking about it?
Still thinking about it.
And that's it. I did have one thing on that. Ms. Darnes, I think, is on the advisory board at Mountain Empire. I talked to Mr. Ferguson. He, that promised program, he said there's one advisor at Gate City and a sheriff at Dry Cove and Twin Springs.
So one at Gate City and then a sheriff one for that, too. Okay. Because I know in his presentation, he did mention that he thought that was some of the issue with the students. So we do have our next meeting Friday afternoon, and I will mention that.
Is that all, Ms. Darnes?
That's all I have, yes.
Okay. Any comments, supervisors' comments, requests, or recommendations before we go into executive session?
I did have some normal comments unless somebody else wanted to speak first. On the VDOT, Ms. Begley from Gris Chapel Lane called about preconstruction of paving that's scheduled this year. Pod holes, that's been corrected. Oveys Creek Road Midway and a falling tree, and that's been corrected. Luray Road, they brought in a big excavator. They worked there for several weeks for safety. That's been taken care of. Gate Road in Nicholsville for drainage. Maintenance and paving's completed. By the way, the paving projects are back on now. It's at the plant's roof. No orange bags collection issues. There is a resident in my community, Anthony Odell, that has a hundred signatures for intersection site improvement and Little Duck Road in 71. Will be, I guess, submit that to Mr. Sumter. Is that how the petitions? How would that work coming?
I don't know that I've ever had a petition. Is it for work that needs to be done?
Well, it's for site correction, site vision.
Yeah, just can you get it to me and I'll send it on?
It would be the, the project, state project for safety.
Okay.
What's the name of that? That natural town is now?
Six-year, uh, Smart Scale.
Smart Scale.
Can, if he wants to send that to me, if you'll give him my email address?
I've got it, so I've got it on paper. I'll just bring it back. The school, Dustin Sheriff's Department's safety issues are being addressed throughout the summer months. I'm going to try to work on getting a right-of-way mowing schedule so people will know when their neighbor isn't going to be mowed on the VDOT contracts. Six-year plan for completion this year in my area. Ovee Creek, that's in Midway Community. Gillenwater Chapel in Nicholsville. Outside my area is Green Chapel Lane. And the project over Devils Ford going to Haddon Alb, that's a federal project. And they're going to start that this year. On meetings attended, I did door-to-door community flyers in Midway and Twin Springs Water Project, and attended PSA meeting in Midway Methodist Church. Richard Gillenwater did some organization. Mr. Williams, who is here tonight, continuing to do some work on that. We've got two, over 200 user agreements. Did get a user agreement from Mr. Ferguson for the Twin Springs School. So that's going to be a big addition to that project. That's all I have.
Anyone else have comments?
I'd like to make a comment, please. I'd like to invite everyone in District Two on May the fourteenth at 6:00 PM. I'm going to have a town hall meeting for the district of, of District Two. It's going to be at the Boozy Creek Community Center. That's located at 1989 Shelley's Road in Bristol, Virginia. I'll have some special guest speakers there. We're going to have Dell Sanders. He's the chief of the fire department. He's going to be there to talk about the ISO ratings, how important they are to the fire departments, and how important they are to the residents because it concerns their homeowner's insurance and also businesses, too. We're also going to have Mike Dishman there. He's the PSA director, and he'll be there to talk about the Hilton Sewer Project. So I'd like to invite everyone to come out, come hungry, because we're going to have free hot dogs, and just come and fellowship with us. And we'll talk and get some good communication going on, because I feel that's what we need in our community, is more communication and more involvement. And I'd just like to invite all of District Two there.
Thank you.
I have one comment that I'd like to close out on. Just thank you to the county staff for, you know, all that you do. And thank you, in particular, Frida, for helping us work out on this budget. You know, when we started with the recommendation from the budget committee, we were at a $3 million deficit, and we cut, Frida and I worked to cut that about in half. And then I think we've talked with enough people that we can get that down a little bit more. And that's reflected in that document that I shared with this lady in the green pants out here. I forgot her name, though. Ms., what, what's your name?
Name?
Yes, ma'am.
Bobby Couch Powers.
Bobby Couch Powers.
Oh. You said we could have a copy of the bylaws, too. Do you have a copy of those with you?
I don't have a copy of those with me, no.
Does anybody have a copy of the bylaws?
Probably not. But we can, we can send that to you.
Is that all the comments, board members? John, the enterprise zone incentives, were you wanting to do that now?
Yes, sir. I think that was included in your packet of information. And first of all, I thank you all for your service. It's a thankless job. I've served on boards, got all my life on some board or another church or organization, started in college, and it is, nobody thanks you most of the time. So I thank you. Somebody told me one time, a wise guy said, if you want to, if you don't want to run for anything else, run for supervising. So that's something to take with you is, because it is. You get beat up a lot, and you've got a job to do. And I appreciate what you're doing for the county. Enterprise zone incentives, that is your incentive that you give back to businesses that locate within the enterprise zone. Enterprise zone covers, you could have up to six square miles in any county. The state designated enterprise zones back in 1999, and Scott County was one of the first. Started in Duffield. Now the enterprise zone goes from Duffield all the way to Weber City, goes all the way to Nicholsville, and it includes Dunn Gannon as well on those major routes. So we can expand businesses along those routes. So as a result of the enterprise zone that y'all enacted, and this is an incentive that you give back to businesses because they've invested in Scott County. So we have a 2021 expansion of Temper Sealy. They qualified for the machine and tool tax grant and real estate tax grant of 60% by averaging over 1.5 times the minimum wage rate. And their tax grant will, will only be on the 2021 expansion items for a total of $83,353.70. And as a result of two expansions, 2013 expansion and a 2021 expansion, VFP has qualified for machine and tool tax grant and a real estate tax grant on the 2013 expansion, 40% for a tax year 2022 and 20% for tax year 2023. And their grant is $25,734.71. And also as a result of 2021 expansion, VFP Incorporated has qualified for machine and tool tax grant and a real estate tax, tax grant of 60% for tax credit or tax year 2023 by averaging again 1.5 times the minimum wage rate. Their tax grant related to this expansion would be $42,194.01. So Temper Sealy in the amount of $83,353.70 and VFP Incorporated in the amount of $67,928.72. And, you know, you ask if that's all the money they pay. They don't. They pay more than that. You have three manufacturing companies in Duffield that are paying over a million dollars in taxes to the county. So this is just a portion of what they pay. And that's because they created additional jobs for the county and, and have more investment in the county. And we continue to support the existing businesses that are there.
How much has VFP grown in the last five, 10 years?
They've grown tremendous. They've actually added, between them and Temper, they have the majority of the property in the Duffield Industrial Park. So they've added two separate buildings or properties, and then Temper has added also. So the expansions on Temper, don't hold me to that. I think it's four. And, I mean, VFP's four and Temper's three. So it could be both are four. But I'll check that.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm for that area. Just tickle the daff to see the, the growth of those two companies in particular.
And a lot of times, we do. We forget that Duffield is there because it's close to the county line that way. And a lot of people are exiting out of the county this way. But Duffield has been a, a great asset to the county, and they continue to be an asset to the county manufacturing employees.
We need a motion. Any discussion or other questions?
I did have a, sorry, beyond the enterprise thing now. You finished that up first.
No, we're going to, no.
It must be a free.
Well, I did have something else, but you want to do that first.
For Mr. Kill, for?
Yes.
Well, I'll, I'll ask.
Get this out of the way first, before we don't forget.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the enterprise zone incentives?
I'll move.
Mr. Jeter made the motion, and Mr. Main is second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I appreciate that. Also, should introduce Roger, Roger Frager is our chairman, and he's here tonight as well. But we, yeah, usually we would bring that before you vote to the EDA board first, but we were, have not met in April. We won't meet till May 15 because we had some conflicts on the schedule. So we will take that up at our next meeting. And I want to go ahead and give you some information, too. Can I do that? Sometimes I do a presentation, and I just did for your information, just one sheet. And I'll give you a copy as soon as I get done. So by the numbers, you know, you look at economic development, and it's good to be here to present to you. And I think I'll address what it had in mind here, hopefully. But economic development is, is, in a nutshell, is programs, policies, or activities that seek to improve the quality of life for the county, to all county citizens. And each county has its own opportunities, challenges, and priorities. And economic development is a valuable investment that every community should make. So in partnership with the county, we revamped the website the last couple of years. And thanks to Frida's leadership on that, we've been able to do that. And of course, Penny as well. The new site offers ease of navigation, hopefully a quicker path to needing information. We continue to focus on business retention and expansion, as I mentioned before. And if you look on this, we've had 10 manufacturing expansions. And you would have to go to With County to equal that. And that's not only the state eighty-one. And those are the three largest manufacturing companies that we have there. The grants that we brought or we managed in the county, $24,661,000. So if you look at our, the years that I've been here, and there's 45 years of experience in the economic development office, that's over a million dollars a year. That's three times what our budget is. So we're bringing money back to the county to reinvest in the county. We've also assisted with 14 river cuttings, and that's in the last five years. You know, seven of the top 20 employers in the Lenoysco region are in Scott County. And you'll say, well, that's not saying a lot. It is because three of them are manufacturing. So top, the top five largest employers have an estimated workforce of 700, 1,700 people. Of course, number one's a school. But if you add the next two together, which are manufacturing, they owe, there are more employees than the school has. And then you also have VC to capital. You talk about small business. We've helped 19 businesses with that grant, $885,000. We've also had 40 loans of $744,000. And total private investment, great figure here for Duffield. There's a $114 million private investment in Duffield. So, you know, it's not just about Riverside, or we have to also focus on Duffield as well. If you look at the next page, page two, that we track a lot of figures. Per capita incomes, $26,681. And that's great, great. I think when I started here, around $16,000. So it's good that it's increased. The median household income, that's individuals per capita, the median household income, and that's everybody in the household, is $44,535. The unemployment rate is tracing really the state rate. It's at 3% now. And we also do a zip code survey of people who are coming into the county to work. And you can see by that zip code survey that there's people coming even as far as Smith County or Tasswell County to, to Scott County to work. We still have 4,000, a little over 4,000 out commuters that go out to work, but we have over 2,000 that come into the county to work. So we have to depend on a regional workforce. And that's why the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority is important. That Frida and I are representing the county on that board. Already on that, there's $7 million private investment in county, because there's work in other projects. And also, there's $36 million in grants that they receive for that regional project. So it's great that we have the region as well for our workforce. You know, in Duffield, when we were looking at that, that the highest worker percentage coming from, was from Wise County, not Scott County, because it's that close to Wise County. So it's, it's important that we have that regional, regionalism and regional work, regional workforce. As far as the, I've heard a lot of talk about the Riverside development and comments about that. Well, Riverside, your investment in Riverside, or the previous board's investment in the Riverside was about $2 million. Since that time, you've got well over $7 million in investment there. So was that a good investment for the county? Yes, it was a good investment for the county. Now, if you sold the property, you wouldn't have anything to market for a potential business that came in. So you would sell that, and you don't know what you would get there. You could get any type of business or any type of housing. So that's, that's important that you realize that, too. The same in Duffield. If you sold that, we wouldn't have developable property. Why did Temper locate in Scott County? Temper located because they came to Scott County from Wise County to look at a building. They looked at a building in, in Duffield, and they said, do you have anything else? And they said, well, we got this 400. And they said, well, we got this 47 acres over here in Duffield, and that's where they are today. And that's where they've expanded a number of times. If we didn't have that developable land that was ready to go, they wouldn't have been in Duffield. They would have been in Oak Ridge because we were competing with Oak Ridge for that project. So that's all good information to tell you. But are there, the other thing I'll tell you about revenue. You know, you talk about revenue on the Crigger Road Tech Center. All the, all the EDA wants to do is invest back in the county. Our mission is to create jobs and to create investment for the county. It's always been that. And our priorities have always, have not changed much. It's market the county and diversify that economic base. We've diversified a lot by adding the technology part, by adding one up here on this end of the county. And the board works really hard in doing that. And they're a great board to work with. Y'all have got some great business-minded people on the board. But the average annual income over the last four years for the Crigger Road Tech Center is $105,695. The expenses for Crigger Road Tech Center, I don't get anything from the county, is $83,481. So how much has the county invested in the Crigger Road Tech building? Does anybody know? Zero. Is it an asset? Yes. So Riverside, how much have you invested there? $2 million. Return on investment? $7 million. Average annual income for Riverside, $15,400. Expenses, $16,693. The EDA's covering that. It's not costing the county anything. We're actually paying the maintenance people to go down to the Crigger Road Tech Center to work or to go to Riverside to work. So we're not making a lot of money that's out there on the media, social media, whatever. Any questions?
The question I had, I don't know if you can take me into our meetings lately, but they're wanting to know how much revenue, new revenue incremental is being created in the last few years. And I don't, at this time of night, it's kind of hard for me to decipher this. Looks like you got a lot of good data. But just in general, how much revenue that affects the taxpayers has been created by the EDA in the last four or five years?
Well, you've got a million dollars from the tax, from the manufacturing that's paid in taxes annually. That's just from three manufacturing companies. That's not counting any other business that we've helped. Sales tax or anything. I'm not counting any of that. I'm just a million dollars on the manufacturing. If you didn't have that, that's one million of your $30 million, or whatever it is.
Any questions?
What are your plans with Riverside?
We are, hopefully we'll get another developer to help us with that site and develop the site. And have a mixed use. It's always been a plan to have a mixed-use site there. It's if you go back to the original plan, it was always to be a mixed use. So you'd have retail and then some type of line industrial or that, or technology-based business and then housing around. It's always been that way.
We are going into closed session. Any more questions? We have three items to go into closed session. A3, real estate, Gate City. A7, legal counsel. And A5, perspective industry, Duffield, Weber City and Dungham. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Darrell made the motion. We have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Perspective. Perspective, industry, Duffield, Weber City and Dungham. We're going to executive session.